Welcome to the Watzburg area school district where we are student centered and future focused for a world-class education. I now call to order the Monday, March 10th work session of the Watzburg area school district board of directors. May I have a roll call, please? Oh, pardon. Pledge first. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now a roll call, please.
Mr. Blaser.
President.
Mr. Bremagen.
Present.
Mrs. Burlingham.
Present.
Mrs. Heatherington.
Here.
Mrs. Lee. Mr. Morve.
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Present.
First item on the agenda this evening, well, we have a school report next week. Dr. Berlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seneca High School plans on presenting next week.
Excellent. Well, we look forward to hearing. Next on the agenda is guest and citizen comment. Have we anyone signed up to speak this evening? No, we do not. Moving on, for superintendent's report, Dr. Berlin, do you have anything for us this evening and to look forward to next meeting?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. I'm going to have Mrs. Bendig share some information here in just a moment, but briefly, we've been facing some staffing issues with transportation. It's actually a region and nationwide issue right now attracting and retaining bus drivers. We have done fairly well this year, but the past couple of months, we have noticed a bit of a downturn in staffing. So we'll get into those things here. I think we will start with some numbers and just talk about the challenge that's developing, and then what we can do here in the short term to move forward. So, Mrs. Bendig, if you would.
Thanks, Dr. Berlin. So, tonight, just to recap the transportation issue that we have, we're going to talk about the driver workforce, the local market, and a proposed recommendation. So, we talked with the Transportation Department this morning, and at the beginning of the year, we had 24 bus runs. One was outsourced because it was something that we couldn't accommodate with the current driver implementation that we had at the beginning of the school year. We are now down to 22 runs. So we're still outsourcing that one run, and we're only having two runs. At the beginning of the year, we had 23 drivers, four subs and two mechanics, and the subs and the mechanics all have their CDL school drivers so that they can fill in when they need to. But if we had 25 runs, we should have had 25 drivers. So, right off the bat, we're using at least one sub all the time. Currently, as of this week, we have 17 drivers, four subs and two mechanics. So from the beginning of the year till now, we're down six drivers. Since the beginning of the year, they have scheduled 175 interviews, only completed 50 of them because 125 of them just did not show up. They made, out of those 50 interviews, they made five offers, and we had four offers accepted. So, one driver is currently driver, the other three are in training. That onboarding process from offer to getting them in the bus, driving a route, is six to eight weeks, if everything goes smoothly. So, it's not something that we can just, you know, hey, you want to come drive a bus? Get in a bus, drive our kids, right? So, six to eight weeks if nothing happens to get them going. So, something else that was brought to our attention by superintendent's, the starting rates for the area districts, Fort LeBeuf is bumping their driver rate up to $23 an hour, and they're offering them an additional $2 per hour if they decline their medical insurance. Northeast is at 23, First Student's $21.50, Mill Creek's $21, Harbor Creek $19.60, Fairview's $19.50. Our starting rate is $19. And then General McLean, who, they and Fort LeBeuf and Northeast are still self-op, but General McLean's at $18.36. So, like everything else, all of the positions that we've been, you know, we've been talking about local two positions, we're in the middle of teacher negotiations. We know that the rates in the area, we're far behind, and we know what kind of a problem that poses. So, basically, our, we know that there's an ongoing national driver shortage. We have constant turnover that directly affects our ability to complete the routes, and our consolidated routes are making extremely long bus runs for some students. Kids are on the bus for well over an hour, sometimes over an hour and a half, just getting them home. So, we need to have some competitive rates for recruitment and retention. At least matching some of the other local rates may stop the bleeding. It may not be the long-term solution, but if we can keep the people we have from jumping to a different district, that's better than not being able to find someone when they leave. So, recommended short-term solution, we did talk to Dorothy today, thinking about increasing driver rates by $4 to $5 an hour, and we're still waiting to see an amended contract from Durham, but we're hoping to have that to be added for your review and approval for next week. That's kind of where we're at.
Yeah, so this is, this is an issue that, it hasn't developed overnight. We've been keeping an eye on it. The recent urgency comes from a couple school districts bordering us raising their rates, which we just became aware of in the past week, week and a half. And as interesting, I was at a superintendent meeting recently in Erie County, and their stories sound like our stories. I know General McLean and Fort LeBeuf in particular are a little worse off than us relatively. They've started adjusting school schedules and creating, getting creative with runs to accommodate shortages of drivers. Our goal is not to get into that situation. So, the good news is, we do have runs covered right now. The margin of operation of error, if someone's sick or absent, is pretty narrow. We have drivers in the pipeline that we would like to keep after their training is over. So, I was able to, at the very end of the day, get ahold of the regional manager for Durham, and they are putting together an amended rate costing for us, so that's something I can share with the board during the week. I can send that out to you, and then we can have some discussion next week. Breaking one of my own rules, I don't, I don't like to ever put something that involves a big commitment like this or a decision in front of the board on short notice, but I do think it would be a good idea to add this to the agenda next week. The worst thing that would happen is the board talks about it and decides not to move forward it with it at this time, and/or asks us to do further research, or I at least want to give you that option to know what it would look like if we do want to do something to get our rates into the range of some of these other districts that are very near to us. So I'd like to give you those options, but that one involves the board deciding tonight as we go through the agenda that, yeah, let's, let's put this, let's entertain it on the agenda next week.
Any other questions for Dr. Berlin or Mrs. Bendig?
Mr. President.
Yes, great.
Waterford said $2 discount for insurance. What benefits do we offer, if any?
So, there is a health insurance package that Durham offers its employees, but they pay into it. I, and from what I understand, it is rather expensive.
For them?
For the employee, yes.
Because if I remember, if I remember my history correctly, at one point in time, they were all our employees. They had healthcare and pension?
Yeah, all public school employees pay into the pension system.
And then we got out of that to try to save funds and start outsourcing this way, I believe is the history, is some of the history of it. And so, you know, as an employer, is it, the marketplace is very strained, but then I assume it's also the hours, it's just part-time hours. What hours are they averaging? What's the average bus driver hours?
Yeah, so that's, that's really the challenge, is the shift. It's a split shift. A lot of people just simply, when faced with an employment choice, looking at their options, bus driver is no longer at the top of the list when you can make the same amount of money doing something else.
I agree. Not everything's about the dollars and cents. In fact, if I go back historically, I can remember small business owners saying, "I'm doing it for the insurance."
Yes.
They drove bus, they didn't care about the hourly wage. They were driving bus for the access to the insurance benefit, and there's no benefit, there's no ancillary benefit like that, it sounds like anymore.
No, no, it's, it's not 100% paid. Nope, that's correct.
Mr. President, did you say the reason why we were down six drivers? Was it just attrition, they just left, they went to other districts? Did they say why they were down six?
I don't know the exact reasons, but I know some of them left to go to other districts.
Okay.
I don't know if all six of them, if that's the reason.
I just wondered with a, with a, with a CDL license, that's a pretty attractive license to have. And just wondering if, you know, as we offer, make offers, and people accept, and sometimes then they have training and they have other things, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to train them and then immediately lose them, you know? So if there's a way somehow that you could get a commitment of some kind, and maybe that is in their contract when they sign on, you know, they're at least a year, they're at least two years, I'm not exactly sure how it works, but I was just curious to know what the reasons were, you know, why we're down to six?
Well, I guess you can't force someone to work for a year, right? I mean...
Well, if you sign the contract and you say that you're committed for a year, I mean, I mean, sir, somebody could, I guess they could, they could bail on you, but...
Sure. I know that they were offering sign-on bonuses, you know, as a tool.
There's pretty significant bonus, and they don't get that unless they're driving.
Because when, when did we raise these, we raised these two years ago? Yeah, that's what I thought.
We were like having this conversation as well.
Two years ago. Right after the pandemic kind of ended, we had this same thing. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Blaser.
So, Dr. Berlin, maybe you don't know the answer to this yet, but just some kind of ballpark numbers, if it's, if we're looking at like $5 more an hour, and we're looking at an average of five hours a day, are we anticipating that the extra cost will be directly driven by whatever we might increase our rates to our drivers, or does Durham put in administrative costs that may bring that number up even higher? Do you know that yet, or is that what you're waiting to hear from them?
That's what we're waiting to hear. So to give the drivers a $4 raise, for example, it's going to cost more than...
Just the $4?
$4, yeah. There's a variety of things that an employer has to pay on top of.
And Mrs. Bendig, which of the schools did you say, did you say some of them were, as Mr. Bremagen was asking, in our old model, were they are employed by the district?
Yes, I did say that. Northeast, Fort LeBeuf, and General McLean are still self-op.
And First Student, is that what district?
That's a subcontractor, like, much like Durham is.
Right.
They run City of Erie Transportation, along with EMTA buses in between.
And Milker, they operate Milker.
They do Milker, too.
So, yeah, First Student and Durham, they're basically the largest two providers for school.
And Fairview uses Durham as well, correct?
Fairview is Durham as well.
And so, but a driver for us and a driver for Fairview might get paid different, even though they work for the same company, because of what their district rates are?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Berlin or Mrs. Bendig? Well, we'll look forward to seeing whatever we come up with over the next few days and potentially an add-on for next week, so. The chair now recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bendig for the business administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For tonight's, the treasurer's report, general fund, $12,910,377.05 as of the end of February. And I did want to point out that with the new model for interest, we are, we received a little over, almost $13,400 from the Pliget account, and almost $27,000 in the sweep account at Northwest this month. So, and there was only, it was a short month, too. So, I'm excited to see how that grows over the next couple of months. So, that is general fund, and then the capital projects, there's $17.22 in that account currently. And cafeteria has $738,598.85 as of the end of February. And the student activities balance as of the end of February, those accounts have a total of $74,874.23 collectively in those accounts. It will have the budget versus actual, and the cafeteria profit and loss reports for next week. Moving on to the bill lists for tonight, checks already written, so between the last board meeting and the work session this evening, general fund, $95,510.46. There were no capital projects checks, and the cafeteria was $48,018.80. The rest of the bill lists will be available for next week. And that is all I have.
Mrs. Bendig, does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Bendig?
Mr. President, just one, one quick question. I just wanted to make, if you would, $17 in the capital projects. Historically, we move things over from the fund balance into capital projects when we have capital projects that we have to pay out. Is that usually how we do that?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not, that's not a static value that it floats during the course of the year as needed?
So, we transfer money in when we have a capital project check, so we transfer it in, it's paid, it's back down to $17.
So it's just a whole, it's a accounting function, yeah?
It was, that was the collection of interest over time.
$17?
Yep.
Perfect.
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. The chair now recognizes Dr. Andrew Pushjack for finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll have one item for the board's consideration next week under finance, which is 7A, the budgetary transfers. Those would be the monthly budgetary transfers from budget to actual. That's all we'll have for next week.
Thank you, Dr. Pushjack. Next, the chair will recognize Mr. Jeremy Blaser for building and grounds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items for the board meeting next week, under building and grounds. A is the security glass for exterior door project, as detailed in the attached file, and the second one is to approve the facility use request as outlined below.
Does anyone have any questions on the exterior door project or the facility use requests? Hearing done, those will be on the agenda for next week. Thank you, Mr. Blaser.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next, the chair will recognize, pinch hitting tonight, Mr. Jesse Williams for Ms. Nicole Lee for personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Lee will have seven things for you next week, including A, appointments as listed, B, resignations as listed, leave request, conference request, tuition reimbursement, F, the cafeteria head cook position MOA, and it looks like job descriptions.
Does anyone have any questions on those seven items?
Mr. President.
Yes, Dr. Pushjack?
Could the superintendent please share with us the difference between our school police officer that we have and our school security guard job description?
Okay, so, and I might ask Mr. Engler to jump in. There's actually three types of security personnel outlined in school code that you, that schools can employ. There is a school resource officer, which we have currently, and a school resource officer is a law enforcement worker that is employed or co-employed by another law enforcement agency. So, in this instance, that would be the Erie County Sheriff's Department. So, we share cost with them during the school year for the deputy here. So that's, that's the school resource officer. A school police officer is what we have with Officer Doremo over here at the elementary. And to be a school police officer, you need to have the municipal police training, which is about a six-month course, or be a graduate of the state police academy. So, in Mr. Doremo's instance, he's, he's a former state trooper, so he qualified that way. And it's interesting, the school police officer is actually commissioned, sworn in by the common court of police downtown, and that person has arrest powers on our campus. They're actually a school district campus police officer with all the authority they're in. And then the school security guard is a new job description that is on the agenda tonight. So if you're not a graduate of the state police academy, you can't be a school police officer essentially, and when you're no longer working for an agency other than the state police, you can't be an active SRO. So, school security guard is like a third category that allows schools to hire armed security in a school building. So in this, in this case, we anticipate Officer, or Deputy Bowers, he's our current Seneca resource officer, and he's indicated he's probably going to retire from the sheriff's office, and he thinks he might do that this summer. So our recommend, and our recommendation would be that the board consider bringing him on as the school security guard. That would be the pathway, and that's the reason for the job description on here. We're just kind of lining that up in case we want to entertain that particular staffing arrangement.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. Is there going to be a similar setup as what's going on in elementary school with that resource officer?
Yeah, so the, the job description, the duties and things are essentially the same. Officer Doremo would have the police authority on campus, so if we needed to go to, you know, that level with a situation, we could. Most often, though, we use our school police officers and school resource officers here in the SRO model, which is not a direct heavy police inner mitigation force. They will be an initial responder and do what's necessary, but if there's charges and things, and we're looking at, you know, something moving to the court system, the state police really, we have a memorandum of understanding with the state police, and there are official first responders, and they have way more resources than us, and we don't want to tie our officers up here in proceedings. So the state police usually handle charging if we need to get into that, even though Officer Doremo could, for example. And then their system picks up the process from there, including whatever interaction might have to go on at the DEA's office.
Hearing done. Thank you, Mr. Williams, and we'll see those items on the agenda for next week. Any, was there an additional question?
No, I just am trying to, in my mind, figure out what, what's going on, but it's fine.
Well, a school security guard is, has lethal firearms training, and they're certainly authorized to carry weapons. They could use force in a life or death situation. They do not have arrest powers, they're not associated with a police department. So that's, I think that's the easiest, maybe sharpest line I could draw.
To follow up on that, though, in today's interactions, aren't we mostly a referral service to the police department anyways? Don't we, don't we mostly just, it doesn't, investigative and then refer?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I just kind of summed it up in my own brain as, you know, the role that Officer Doremo has here is like the state police feeder to that role, and this role is more of a sheriff's department-level feeder to this role. Just different background training in order to lead to that subsequent job description. That was really the only way I reconciled it in my mind.
Both ways, though, Mr. Bremagen, that's the best way to think of it, is assess and refer, you know? Immediate intervention, assess and refer.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Williams, and we'll see those on the agenda for next week. Next, the chair recognizes Mrs. Brittany Burlingham for more policies than I can count.
Well, on the agenda, thank you, Mr. President, on the agenda for next week, there are, as you can see, a lot of first reading of policies, so we will be reviewing a lot to approve the first reading of policies as outlined and attached. So please see below, and we'll follow up next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Burlingham. Are there any questions on any of the policies outlined in the summary?
There is an executive summary that's linked in front of the first readings and in front of the group of policies up for second reading from last month, and I just tried to boil down the changes or revisions to each policy in a brief paragraph. I can, overall, I can sum these policy revisions up more like policy maintenance. Over the past two years, I've seen just an unprecedented amount of school code be changed that touches all types of school policy and mandates that certain policies and practices are in place. So by and large, this round, these two rounds, I guess, of policies will bring us nearly up to date with the two omnibus school code bills that have been passed last December, or two Decembers ago, and then over the summer in July, this past July. That'll bring us up to specs there. Now, the Title IX policies, 103 and 104, Knox Law Firm and our solicitor, Jennifer Gornall, they're reviewing those policies. We're back to the 2020 version of those, and that's what's on our website right now. But there has been a few interloping cases that may be incorporated into policy as a guideline. It would be minor revision, so that's, those two really the most outstanding policies that we have. Right now, what we have is certainly functional and compliant, but we may be able to make it, refine it, make it a little bit better. And then we will hopefully have a policy before the end of the school year for a first reading dealing with artificial intelligence. That is becoming a very integral part of education. That is becoming a very integral part of education. It's starting to show up in all types of applications. And teachers and students need to be aware of the capabilities, what it can and what it cannot do. Maybe more importantly. So, the recommendation that's coming from the academic world and legal world is you really should start to assemble some type of policy on how you educate your staff and students about AI and ways that they can use it. I'm sure that's going to be a work in progress, the breadth, the speed, and the depth and the breadth that that is growing. So, hopefully, we'll have something there before the end of the year. We do have a committee of folks looking at that in addition to the solicitor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you again, Mr. Burlingham. The chair now recognizes Mr. Stephen Morve for Curriculum.
Mr. President, currently, there are three items on the agenda for next week. The first item is the Alternative Education for Disruptive Youth Agreement between Wattsburg School District and Bethesda, per the attachment for review. Second item is the Educational Services Agreement between Wattsburg School District and the Meadows Psychiatric Center, per that attachment as well. And then, the third item is the agreement to extend the previously approved agreement for the substitute staff services with ESS Northeast and the Wattsburg Area School District. So, those are the items that will be on the curriculum agenda for next week, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Morve. Are there any questions on the three items? Hearing none, those will be on the agenda for next week. Chair now recognizes Mr. Greg Brumman for Transportation.
I will have nothing under Transportation for next week. I should just hit a record button for that.
Mr. President, for Transportation, next week, we'll have one item, transportation requests. To approve the transportation request and refocation of field trips since last meeting, as listed.
Thank you, Mr. Brumman. Are there any questions on the transportation requests? Hearing none, those will be moved over for next week. Yeah, and per the earlier discussion, just want to affirm or confirm that we have consensus from the board to see a transportation request potentially next week as an addendum, assuming we get the information we need from Durham Services. Are there any objections or any additional conversation that needs to happen on that light? Well, we're good. All right, excellent, thank you. Chair now recognizes Ms. Leah Heatherington for Athletic and Extracurricular.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will have five items on the agenda for next week. The first one being volunteer list additions. Approve volunteers as listed. B is athletic training services, and that is to approve the athletic training service agreement between UPMC Sports Medicine and Wattsburg as listed in the attachment. And C is athletic appointments as listed. D, extracurricular appointments as listed. And E is game help list additions as listed. That is all that I will have on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Heatherington. Are there any questions on those items? Hearing none, those will move over for next week. The chair will now recognize Mr. Stephen Morve for the Erie County Technical School Joint Operating Committee. Will we have a report for next week?
Yes, Mr. President. Well, we'll have a brief update before the February Joint Operating Committee meeting. Thank you.
And I will say, Mr. Morve, I attended the, myself, Mr. Blazer, both attended the luncheon for the Board of 99. It was very well done, another great opportunity to tour the facilities, and it was a great event. And I'm glad to hear it sounds like going to happen next year as well, so.
I think that that's, this was the first annual Board of 99 visit.
Yes, and the kids that presented did an excellent job. Really kind of opened my eyes to some of the programming that has existed there since I left 26 years ago.
And the meal was all prepared by their culinary teams.
Yes, the culinary teams.
It's all in-house.
Excellent job. But, yeah, very, very nice, and you can... Mr. Blazer, can I also extend your pleasure with the visit?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was very interesting, amazing level and the range of programs they offer. As a rookie in the door, I was, you know, just impressed with everything I saw as an alum. You know, Mr. President didn't waste any time telling everyone that he had been there many times before this.
Mr. President, did you say 26 years ago? Is that what you said?
26 years ago, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for solidifying that.
Just wanted to confirm that in the record.
Aging of thyself. Thank you, Mr. Morve. Chair now recognizes Dr. Andrew Pushjack for the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit. Will we have a report for next week, and do you have anything to share for this? Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll have a brief report next week, but I did want to share tonight just a few high-level items on the intermediate unit budget that was passed by the intermediate unit board, and will now go to all of the school districts for their consideration for passage. The IU budget proposed is $72,204,283. And just to remind the board and the audience, each school district has their fee that they pay each year, and then above and beyond that, school districts can purchase programs and services from the IU. The school district rates have not changed since 2004, so you'll see that same rate. Just a few interesting notes about the budget. The IU will assume the transfer of entity for the early intervention program for Erie's Public Schools, which will add 500 to 600, mostly three-to-five-year-olds that are receiving special services. That'll bring that program, early intervention, over 2,000 students. So, just that program alone is larger than most of our school districts. That addition will increase the budget by about $1 to $2 million. The IU has a fund balance. The IU, of course, is not a school district, so we don't have to maintain a certain percentage, nor do we have the ability to generate revenue through taxes. So, the PDE recommends to the IU's to have a fund balance equal to two months of operation. So, the $9.5 million fund balance, although it sounds like a lot, it is the amount that it would take the IU to operate for the two months as recommended. Those are the only highlights I have. Mrs. Bendig, can you remind us when we will vote as a board on the IU budget?
We would vote after the approval of the IU V budget. So, as long as that's been passed, we will get that on for next month.
For next month? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pushjack. It's now time for board correspondence and dialogue, and if I may, I'm going to start off this evening, because I have in my hands, and I see Ms. Miller sitting out here this evening, the fall issue of Nutrition, Inc. magazine, and the All-Star Award Program. And you can stand up for your round of applause if you'd like. Ms. Janine Miller pictured here from Wattsburg Area School District. Excellent relationship with the group, and it's great to see you honored in the publication, and thank you for the work that you do here. And I do apologize, we had a little snack to leave with last month, and I failed to thank you for that, so I'll do that now. Do we have anything else for board correspondence and dialogue this evening?
I do, if possible. I just would like to congratulate our girls' basketball team for having a fantastic season. And congratulations to those seniors who kind of wrapped up their basketball season. Our boys, obviously, you know, didn't go as far, but we have a lot of young freshmen, and I am excited to see what development happens with all of them. But it was an exciting basketball season, so congratulations to all of them and the coaches. And I love what we do with our sports here, so I'm hoping to watch our basketball program grow.
Absolutely, and thank you for sharing. Is there anything else for correspondence this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move, Pushjack.
Second, Burlingham.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned.